All right. Good evening. This is the May 1st, 2024 Cottage Grove City Council Meeting, which I'm calling to order. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Cambada?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. The next item on our agenda is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody that wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda is welcome to do so at this time. When she was out there, I didn't see anybody sign up. So is there anybody that made it in that wants to speak? All right, saying no, we'll go ahead and close open forum. We'll move to number five, which is option of the agenda.
Move the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Next is presentations. We have quite a few this evening and a really exciting one for the very first one actually, which is a presentation from Arcadia, Arca- yeah? Acacia, thank you. You know how my spelling is there. Acacia Lodge donation. I've been seeing it out on, on social media in a couple of our surrounding cities. So we're excited to have you here this evening. So our Director of Public Safety, Pete Kerner, is going to start us on this one. And then council, why don't we join down in the front?
Well, good evening, Mayor and council. I don't have a long prepared speech here. I'm glad, Mayor, that you asked because I had to ask about nine times how to pronounce the Acacia Masonic Lodge 51. So with that, I have many of the members and Lloyd Chaney is the one through the lodge that I've been working with. But if you could come up and give a little bit and then we'll get some pictures with the members, so.
Sure. Thanks, Chief.
I'm used to doing this. I will introduce first, this is our, our master for the current year here, Worshipful Master Adam Martin. I am currently sitting as a senior warden. And with us tonight, we have our junior warden, Dave Martin, Stephen Miller, and he's our lodge education officer, a past master, Worship Brother Jerry Johnson, and another past master, Worship Brother Neil Kleimer. And we also have from neighboring Newport Lodge Worship Brother Steve Ingram. And not, but last but not least, certainly not least, our director, district representative, I should say, Bill Silberg, and he's from St. John's in Stillwater. That's his mother lodge. So anyway, I'll turn it over to Adam for just a brief moment.
Thank you, Lloyd. On behalf of Acacia Lodge Number 51 in Cottage Grove, Minnesota, it is our honor to donate these fire suppression tools to the city of Cottage Grove and its first responders. And now I'm going to turn it over to Lloyd for some talking points.
So people who don't know history about Cottage Grove or old Cottage Grove, Acacia Lodge Number 51, Number 51 is actually the 51st lodge that was established in Minnesota. That doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, we have, we have numbers that go up past the 300s and things, but doesn't mean that we have 300 current lodges, you know, lodges kind of ebb and flow. But we were founded in 1865. So it'll be, next year, it'll be 160 years that, that this lodge has been in existence. And our lodge building itself was the first congregational church built in 1865. And if you drive past it in old Cottage Grove, you'll see that we have done much work on that building and continue to do so. And we thank the help that we got from the city and certainly the, the County Historical Preservation Society. But we also do this. And if you don't, does anyone know what a fire suppression tool is? So yes, Brother Steve does. So a fire suppression tool is kind of like, it works, you see a fire. So one of our squad cars driving through the city, oh, there's smoke. With this, he can, that, that officer, he or she can grab this, pull the pin, and throw it in, and open up the door and throw it in. And within, it'll, it'll deploy, and it's not a toxic substance. It's actually, what, what's the, what's the filling for?
Worshipful Master, I don't know. It's an aerosol, but the biggest thing on it is, is that it does not take the oxygen out of the room.
Correct. So we recently had a save in Newport with this device. Washington County Deputy deployed and saved some dogs in the house and actually saved the structure from the fire. So within, was it 30 minutes, it'll reduce the temperature in the building by over 1,000 degrees?
Five seconds.
35 seconds, I should say. So 35 seconds, 1,000 degrees temperature difference, and it'll put out the fire, or at least get it to where fire department can come and continue the fire, putting out the fire of the building. So with this, we have six devices right now that we're donating to your, your squad vehicles. And how many vehicles do you have currently?
We have over 18.
So over 18. So it is our mission to get to a point with before next year to have all your vehicles with this device in it. And it's a good program. And yeah, wonderful, wonderful tool for our first responders. So I think I have, I dropped some papers. I'll pick them up. Well, I just want, one thing. Pancake breakfast this Sunday, Acacia Lodge. We start at eight o'clock, end at noon. So come get your pancakes. If you have kids in Park High School or Woodbury High School or high schools around the area, we are giving out three $1,000 scholarships. So I have some flyers that you can take or you can go onto our website. And we also have a Flag Day celebration where we're going to be putting up a flag. And the flag that we're putting up actually is an Eagle Scouts project put on by our brother Steve over here and his sons. And the flag itself actually flew and was carried on the USS Minnesota submarine, who threw our contact from a retired Navy guy that we have in our lodge. So I guess that's it. Mr. Mayor?
Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you, immensely thank you to all of you for this amazing donation and the fact that you're committing already to putting them in every one of our, our squad cars is, is truly inspiring. So I wanted to say that right off the bat. And then the other thing is, you know, it's groups like yourself that really truly do make our communities an awesome place because we would not have, well, frankly, I didn't even know that there was this option available until I started seeing out in some of the social media posts on our surrounding, surrounding cities. And then to find out that we were going to get this opportunity from you in your group here to do that, I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor. I would also say that we could not do this without the help of Minnesota Masonic Charities, our charitable arm of our organization. They are subsidizing these, these units and longer the lodges. We're working in partnership with them. So, and this idea was really orchestrated by our past Grand Master Dayton Bird, and it's being continued by our current Grand Master, Foster Saul.
Fantastic. And you mentioned the, the pancake breakfast this Sunday. I just have to mention the spaghetti dinner is amazing. So, and so are those, I don't know who makes them out there for you guys, but the, the cookies, the peanut butter cookies are to die for too. By the way, I'll just say that. I don't know who, who is making them, but we always enjoy heading out there as a group. So I just want to say thank you for doing that too. And it's obviously good giving back to the community. So with that, can we get the rest of you to come up to do a picture? Anybody?
We'll get the police officers up there too.
Yep, absolutely. Can we get our officers up here?
Thank you. Nice coming.
I'll stay in the boutique category, so we're probably gonna have a 80 cent.
Joel, you got it?
Wait, we got one more request.
That would be a great idea.
Thank you, guys. Let's give them a round of applause, please. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yep, we'll see you on Sunday.
Thanks so much.
Yep, yep, we'll see you Sunday. Thank you. Thank you, guys. We do appreciate it.
Saturday morning.
That's pretty amazing. So pretty awesome. So thank you to them and the group for these amazing donations. We'll move on to B, which is a proclamation. This proclamation is, we have quite a few for the month of May. And so I've asked our various council members to take each one of these proclamations as we go. And then we'll make a motion and a second right after to accept those proclamations. So the first one is Mental Health Awareness Month, and Councilmember Garza is going to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the proclamation, May 2024, Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas, mental health includes our emotional, psych- psychological and social well-being and affects how we think, feel, and act. And whereas, all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. And whereas, we recognize that mental health challenges can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, background, or circumstances. And whereas, mental health awareness is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, schools, and businesses. And whereas, it's important for us to support friends, family, and community members facing mental health challenges, showing them they are not alone. And whereas, promoting understanding, raising awareness, and reducing stigma around mental health are key, are key to fostering a supportive community. And whereas, there are steps we can all take to improve our mental health. And with early and effective treatment, people with mental illness can recover. And whereas, each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and human shares the burden of, the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental health wellness and support preventative efforts. Now, therefore, the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 to be designated as Mental Health Awareness Month. Pass this Wednesday, the first day of May 2024, signed by the Mayor Myron Bailey.
Thank you, Councilmember Garza. So we appreciate that. So would you like to make the motion to accept?
Sure. I would like to make a motion to accept May 2024 as the Mental Health Awareness Month.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Garza. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll move to C, which is another proclamation, as I mentioned, which is EMS Week. And I did ask Councilmember Cambada to welcome this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service. And whereas, the members of the emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate for those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas, the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, the Mayor, City Council, and City of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota hereby proclaim the week of May 19th to May 25th, 2024, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Cottage Grove. With this being the 50th anniversary of EMS Week and the theme EMS Week honoring our past, forging our future.
All right. Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Cambada. So again, would you like to make the motion?
I would like to make the motion to adopt EMS Services Week.
All right. And seconded by Councilmember Olson, with a first by Councilmember Cambada. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. And now we'll move to the next proclamation, which is Police Officers Memorial Day 2024. And Councilmember Olson, you will walk us through this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and my council colleagues. It's an honor and a privilege to be able to read this proclamation proclaiming National Police Week, which will be May 12th through May 18th, 2024, and Peace Officers Memorial Day, which is scheduled for May 15th, 2024. Proclamation reads as follows. Whereas, there are over approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Cottage Grove Police Department. And whereas, some 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in over 16,000 injuries. And whereas, since the first recorded death in 1791, over 25,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas, this year one, police officer's name from Minnesota will be added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial from 2023, in addition to the national number of 282 officers who died in 2023. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Police Law Enforcement Memorials Fund 36th Annual Candlelight Vigil in Washington, DC on the evening of Monday, May 13th, 2024. And whereas, we are honoring the two Minnesota officers that have already died in the line of duty this year. Whereas, May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen and their families. Whereas, the first recognition of Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day was signed by President John F. Kennedy in 1961, it was resolved in Congress that May 15th be designated Police Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which that date falls designated as Police Week. The purpose of Peace Officers Memorial Day is to honor the police officers at all levels of government who have been killed or disabled in the line of duty. Staff from Cottage Grove's Police Department will attend the Peace Officers Memorial Service held at the Minnesota Peace Officers Memorial in St. Paul, Minnesota on Wednesday, May 15th, 2024, as well as attending the Law Enforcement Memorial Day Service at the Historic Courthouse in Stillwater, Minnesota. Now, therefore, the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota hereby proclaim the week of May 12th through 18th, 2024, as National Police Week, and Wednesday, May 15th, 2024, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the City of Cottage Grove, and urge Cottage Grove residents and civic organizations to salute our dedicated law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Pass this, the first day of May 2024, signed by Myron Bailey, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Olson. I'm assuming you want to make that motion?
I do, Mayor. But before I do, I want to mention that in 2024, we've already lost 55, 55 police officers across the country. And that includes the two we lost in Burnsville, Minnesota. And it's May 1st. It's a pretty staggering number to me. So it means an awful lot to me that you gave me the opportunity to read this, and I would move that we pass this as a city council.
All right. Thank you. Who would like to second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Councilmember Olson. E is not, is a presentation, but it's not a proclamation. We have one more in that, in a minute here. But our Public Works Director, Ryan Burfine, is going to walk us through what's coming up this coming Saturday in Cottage Grove, which is always a well-attended event every year. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I'll take a little break from the proclamations for a minute. I'll talk about spring cleanup. So like you mentioned, every year, first Saturday in May, we have our annual spring cleanup event down at Public Works from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. It is rain or shine. The weather's looking pretty good. There was a lot of rain forecast for Saturday. Now we're down to just some light rain in the morning. So we will be there accepting all kind of the usual goods that I have on the screen here before you. We've got our pricing, you know, very similar to other years. And really, our goal is just to have a very convenient way, a low-cost way for folks in town to, you know, clean things out and bring it down. And we take care of that. And also recycling a lot of it, right? We're trying to recycle every bit of it that we can. So that'll be very similar to other years. And in terms of our location, if you're a first time person coming, we're right off the Jamaica Avenue interchange, just kind of across from Target is where Public Works is at, across Highway 61. One thing I always still want to mention, because it was a change, it's been three years now, and maybe at some point, people will know for sure. But I like to say that in 2021, the county did stop accepting hazardous materials at, like a cleanup day like ours. They're really looking for folks just to go to the environmental center up in Woodbury. It's very convenient. I've got the hours and the days that that's open. So, so yeah, that's available still for folks who have more of those hazardous materials that they, that they would like to drop off. So with that, I can answer any questions you have.
All right. Any questions by council at this point for Ryan?
Other than thank you, this is very well-attended every year. And it's nice to clean out yards and garages and houses. So.
And one thing actually I should add, I forgot to say is, a lot of people like to come in the morning. And the morning, and some people want to get about their day. But if you want to have a lot shorter line, by the afternoon, you can be through there in probably five minutes. So I should have added that as well.
There you go. Councilmember Cambada?
Somebody asked me if there's a limit to the size of the objects that can be dropped off.
I mean, I, I should be careful how I answer that, Councilmember Cambada. But I mean, I think if you can bring it in a box truck, you know, some people get a big U-Haul truck, and if that thing's loaded down, we take it. So.
And it was related to old furniture. But yeah, they're trying to ask me, and I'm like, I don't exactly know.
Shouldn't be an issue. If you can like legally haul it down the road, I imagine we can take it.
All right. Good to know. Thank you.
There you go. Awesome. Well, thank you. Thank you, Ryan.
All right. Thank you.
All right. And then our last presentation this evening, proclamation, excuse me, was for the Asian American and Pacific Islanders Heritage Month. And I asked Councilmember Thede to read this proclamation, please.
All right. Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage was first celebrated in the United States in 1978 and was made into a month-long event in 1992. During Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, our community recognizes the innumerable contributions, vibrant cultures, and rich heritage of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. And whereas, the Asian American and Pacific Islander community represents a wide tapestry of languages, ethnicities, and cultural traditions, contributing to the social, economic, and political fabric of the nation. And whereas, the celebration of this month provides an opportunity to reflect on the collective resilience and achievements of the Asian American and Pacific Islander communities. And whereas, we acknowledge Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have thrived and worked in Cottage Grove for generations, and that Asian Americans represent the largest minority group in the city, and that Pacific Islanders represent a small but strong portion that illustrates the city's welcome diversity. Now, therefore, the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 to be designated as Asian, American, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, hopefully to be passed this Wednesday, the first day of May 2024. So I would liken with this to go ahead and make the motion that we designate May 2024 as Asian, American, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Fantastic. Thank you, Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Cambada. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, all council, for each taking one of those proclamations. All right, now we'll move to number seven on our agenda, which is consent. Is there anything council wants to pull from consent?
Move consent.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, go ahead.
Second by Councilmember Garza. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. So if you're here for anything, and that's on tonight's consent calendar, all of those items have been approved. Eight is approved disbursement, eight A's to pay the bills.
Move the bills.
Have a motion by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second by Councilmember Kamada? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Nine is public carries or are none this evening. Ten is bid awards. We do have one bid award this evening, and it is Utility Engineering Building and Low Zone Water Treatment Plant Fiber Optic Cable Project Bid Award, and it looks like instead of Amanda, it looks like Ryan Burfine, our Public Works Director, is going to take this.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So we did accept bids on April 18th for this project, and quite a long name, because this is a fiber optic that is going to serve both of those new facilities down there in Cottage Grove. We're going to get it there from our Public Works facility, so the city fiber grows from City Hall to Public Works at this point, so this will be like a directional drilling-type project to get that fiber down Jamaica 100th and Ideal Avenue, to really serve from, you know, internet connectivity perspective, but also our SCADA system that runs our entire water system, sewer system, is also going to be really housed in that new treatment plant, and this will provide that good city-owned fiber connectivity for that system. And with the bids, we did have six bids that we received. You can see the low bid by Castor John Incorporated, that was under our engineer's estimate of $210,000. And in terms of this contractor and kind of past performance working with them, because we don't do a lot of like directional drilling, fiber utility-type projects like this, they haven't been a, like a prime contractor, but in terms of a lot of our bigger projects with street lighting, they've done a lot of work in town as a subcontractor on those larger projects with street lighting work, so a lot of familiarity with this contractor in the past. And with that, I have the recommendation for award, and I'm standing for any questions.
All right, Councilmember Kamada.
See a couple of erroneous outliers in the bidding schedule.
Yep.
Can you, can you make any interpretations of those?
Yeah, so looking at those, Councilmember Kamada, Mr. Mayor, we talked to our designer who really has more experience with this industry. There is a lot of work in this industry right now because of all the grants for fiber, and not this type of fiber, but like citywide fiber for, you know, internet connectivity and enroll areas, so my understanding is, is this, this industry is just very swamped, and there's a lot of contractors that are, you know, their workloads are extremely full. They still are bidding on projects, I think, just because, right, if, if maybe there's not a lot of bidders, not a lot of competition, they might get a project with a really high bid, is my understanding. Very comfortable with our, our price and where our engineer's estimate was, and happy that we had, you know, a contract that had availability to fit this project in.
All right, fantastic. Any other council comments? All right, seeing none, council, there is a resolution for recommendation on the screen if somebody would like to take that.
I, I would move that we adopt Resolution 2024-069, awarding the Utility Engineering Building and Low Zone Treatment Plant Fiber Optic Cable Project to Castor John Incorporated in the amount of $200,671.20.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Thede. Second by Councilmember Kamada. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ryan. All right, we'll move to 11, which is our regular agenda item, and we do have one, which is the Independent School District 833 Transportation Facility Preliminary Plat, Final Plat, and Site Plan Review, and Connor Jakes is going to take us through this, so welcome, Connor.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, excited to be with you. The three applications before you this evening are a preliminary plat, final plat, and site plan review. The subject site is located along West Point Douglas Road South. To the west of the subject site, I'll just note, is the CAP Industries-owned parcel. They currently have one building constructed. To the south is the CP Rail, and then to the northeast is the Glen Grove Business Center, which currently houses the Bulletin License Center, just for reference. Little background on the subject site, it does consist of two lots, which are highlighted on screen before you. Both are known PB Plan Business. Walk through the history of 8585 first, which is highlighted in orange on screen. So that site was originally constructed in the 1970s, which was prior to a lot of the current development standards that we see in code today, so, you know, thinking impervious surface, coverage, open space, setbacks, allowed uses, and the like. So that's why from an aerial image, it appears that that site doesn't meet a lot of current-day standards. That's because it was constructed prior to a lot of the current-day standards. Other thing I wanted to note is that the legal description for that property is currently meets and bounds, which will come into play when we talk about the final, preliminary and final plat. The site on the east, 8587, was constructed in 2001 and met the standards of approval at that time, and in 2001, we did have a lot of the current-day standards that we have in place today, and that's why from aerial, it does appear and does meet a lot of the current-day standards that we have. That parcel was platted with the Glen Grove Business Edition, which is right here. And I just wanted to note that that expansion in 2001 did receive approvals of a site plan review and conditional use permit to expand that non-conforming use from the orange parcel, since that was the original one, to that parcel to the east. So that brings us to present date. The applicant is proposing a preliminary and final plat to combine those two lots into one. So the applicant went to Washington County to submit a lot merger application, which the applicant can do without council approval, since it's a simple combination of two lots. But in this case, the county noted the western lot is currently meets and bounds, and then the eastern lot was platted. So in order to combine those lots, they have to submit a new plat that shows them combined, and that's the reason for the preliminary and final plat that's before you. Then I just wanted to note that staff is taking the opportunity to plat the various easements on that plat as well, just to bring it up to modern-day standards and for easier documentation. Second proposal before you this evening is a site plan review to remove the two existing below-ground fuel tanks and to install one new above-ground fuel tank. An image of the proposed fuel tank at this point is on screen before you. Again, just wanted to make note, that fuel tank would be at grade, so not raised up or anything, and then there is sufficient screening from West Point Douglas to really negate any visual impact that could be potential in moving that from a below-ground to an above-ground tank. That screening comes from, there's a stormwater pond here, that the applicant's proposing additional landscaping to really screen that, and then there's an existing office building that would fully block that fuel tank, as the height of the fuel tank is less than the existing office building. Site access is off West Point Douglas Road. There's currently three access points. Two are secured with a rolling gate to deter any unauthorized access to the bus garage parking area. The easternmost access is for employee parking, which is in the southeast of the site. There's no additional accesses proposed with this application. Currently on site, there's 203 parking stalls. The applicant's proposing a total of 166 stalls, which is a removal of 37. However, in conversations with the applicant, they believe the 166 stalls proposed would be sufficient, as there's currently 125 staff members, so that would provide 41 extra stalls for potential future growth if and when that occurs, and then just be sufficient to serve the current use on site. The applicant's also taking this opportunity to beautify the site and bring it up to current-day standards with the trash enclosure. Currently, the receptacles are not within an enclosure, so constructing this enclosure that meets all applicable standards from city code. And the applicant also did submit a detailed landscape plan that meets all city standards. The proposed planting numbers do align with the planned district standards and meet all other applicable code standards for landscaping. With that, I would leave the recommendation on screen before you. The applicant unfortunately was not able to make it, so, but staff's here for any questions.
All right, council, do you have questions? Councilmember Olson.
Thank you, Connor. Nice presentation there, and this looks like a fairly straightforward project. I'm going to ask a question that you might not know the answer to. I was really hoping the applicant would be here for me to ask this question. Having worked in the fuel business for many years, one of the things I learned was that sometimes those underground tanks aren't as sturdy as we'd like them to be. Do you happen to know how old these tanks are that are underground?
Councilmember Olson, I don't know.
That's okay. I, trust me, I, I wasn't sure you would know. Maybe that's something we can find out from the applicant, but the, the bigger challenge is fuel tank monitoring underground is kind of a tough thing to do, but there's, there's various methods behind how you monitor for things like leaks and what have you, and as tank technology has gotten better, you know, you went from double-wall tanks to triple-wall tanks to different sorts of materials, and, and so underground leakage has been really mitigated to almost 100%, but if these are older tanks, then they may not have the new technology, hence the reason I asked. But I assume there's a plan in place for any sort of environmental mitigation that, that would be related to the removal of these tanks. Have you guys talked about that with, with the district?
Yeah, Councilmember Olson, so that's actually in their contingency plan, and they have funds set aside, so if they do run into contamination when they remove those tanks, they would, you know, dip into that plan and then follow the MPCA standards.
Good.
Resulting in potential contamination if they cross that.
And usually it's, when it happens with these older tanks, it's contained to a pretty small area, and it doesn't perk into the groundwater or anything like that, but it does require some mitigation, so that's why I ask. Thanks very much for that.
Right, council, any other questions for Connor here? All right, there you go. So there are two separate motions that are on the screen. I'll look for who would like to do number one.
I'd like to adopt Resolution 2024-071, approving the preliminary and final plat to be called SWCSD Transportation Facility in order to combine the lot located at 8585 West Point Douglas Road South and 8587 West Point Douglas Road South into one platted lot.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Kamada. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Garza. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And then we have number two.
I'd move that we adopt Resolution 2024-072 to approve the site plan review to install one new 20,000-gallon above-ground fuel tank and associated pumps.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Kamada. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, where are we down to council comments or requests? I'll do my normal and start down with Councilmember Kamada.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, again, thank staff and our public safety for all their hard work and dedication. I also wanted to highlight for anyone who's watching, River Oaks has several events coming up that might be of note, and we're getting into the time of year where Cottage Grove Recreation Department is going to start filling softball leagues and some other summer activities, so anybody who's interested can go to the city's website at cottagegrovemn.gov or River Oaks website at riveroaksmunigolf.com and check out some of our upcoming events.
Fantastic, thank you. Councilmember Olson.
Thank you, Mayor. Three things here for, for the public today. First, if you did not have the opportunity to attend this year's community showcase, which is put on by the Cottage Grove Area Chamber of Commerce, you definitely missed out. It was a fantastic day, great crowd. Several of us were able to be there, kind of, you know, moving around and talking to people, and we were able to answer lots of questions about the local option sales tax proposal for, for this year, and we also had lots of questions on, you know, various road projects, et cetera. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank Lori Levine and all of the members of the chamber who put so much hard work and effort into putting on the community showcase this year. It's always held at Park High School, or recently, it's held at Park High School, and I thought it went off very, very well. So thanks again to the chamber for that. Second thing is, we are in, in the month of May, and as you heard earlier from the various proclamations, there's a lot going on in May. May, May's a busy month, and, and we're moving into a busy summer. Two items I was hoping people might put on their calendar. Item one is May 27th, which is Memorial Day, here at City Hall in front of the Veterans' Memorial out front at 10:00 AM. Our Mississippi River Valley Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Team will be putting on our Memorial Day event. Again, starts at 10 o'clock. Usually the event lasts about 45 minutes. This year's theme will be a salute to our Vietnam veterans. So we're really going to spend some time at the event, you know, with our Vietnam vets. We're starting to lose some of those folks, and we want to make sure that they are honored appropriately for their service and sacrifice. So please join us May 27th, 10 o'clock, out in front for the Memorial Day event. We have some great speakers lined up for you, and it's certainly going to be a very moving event, as it is every year. And on the topic of Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, the things that we do sometimes cost us money, so we have to fundraise, and we're always very grateful for the generous donations that come our way. It just so happens we have a fundraiser set up for this coming Saturday, May the 4th, at noon. This will be at Junction 70, and we're going to be playing Designer Purse Bingo, and then there are several other really great prizes that are available for people should they choose to play. So please join us on Saturday, that's at noon, at Junction 70 for bingo. Now, the way this works is you actually pay a flat fee, and when you pay that fee, you're able to play all the games. So there's several different iterations of, of the bingo, crisscross, fill your board, all those kinds of things. So you get to play lots of games, there's going to be some great food, drinks available. Junction 70 is a beautiful facility, and certainly would help us out with our Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Team and our fundraising, so that we can continue to put on great events like Memorial Day, and we can continue to support our veterans, our service members, and their families. And with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Awesome, thank you, Councilmember Olson. Councilmember Thede.
Yeah, the, I guess the one thing that I was going to mention here is, is that, let's see, I, I didn't actually count the weeks, but I think it's now about seven or eight weeks till Strawberry Fest, so it's, it's coming up, the, the 20th of, I think that was the 20th of, of June. It's the, oops, went too far, yeah, the, the.
20th through 22nd.
21st, 22nd of, of June, so that's, that's coming right up, and, and it turns out that we usually have our meetings the first and third Mondays of the month. We're not having one this coming Monday, but on May 20th, we'll have another meeting at Carboni's in the back room there, and, and everybody's welcome to come, and we still need volunteers for doing different things and, and helping out, and even helping out at Strawberry Fest, things like manning the info booth, or, or helping with different, different activities and things like that, so, but all means, I'd love to have you kind of come by and, and participate. And I guess that's all I got.
Fantastic, thank you, and Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Mayor. I will just piggyback off of Councilmember Thede's, they are looking for more candidates for the Strawberry Fest ambassadors, so please, if you know of anyone that would be a good candidate, starting at age eight, they really are looking for candidates. There is a scholarship for the teenagers, I don't know the age, I think 15 or 16 and up, but it's a really awesome program, and the kids really learn a lot with the activities that they're in throughout the year and the places that they get to visit, so if you know anyone, please spread the word, let them know, we really need candidates for our ambassadors, boys or girls.
Just to make a comment on that, it, it really is a, they, they do really do represent the, the City of Cottage Grove and its ambassadors, and they, they take the, the float to different, different events and that, in different cities, and, and so it, it is a very good time for, for a lot of them, you know, sometimes it gets pretty busy, but, you know, and, and it is very important for the City of Cottage Grove to get out there and, and let everybody know how good we are, so.
There you go, thank you. Thanks for both, and I was glad you, I was going to add it if you didn't, that the boys can be part of it. New as of last year, so we want to make sure that it's, it's for both male and female, so, perfect, perfect. All right, a couple of things real quick for you. First of all, just from a, I'll call it the legal standpoint, we did, at the last council meeting, we did do a closed session to do a performance evaluation, check-in with our city administrator, Jennifer Lovett, and everything went very well. We were very happy with the conversations and the review, so thank you for that, so just letting the public know what that was about. Councilmember Olson mentioned about the community showcase, which I thought was, it was fun, a lot of, lot of people there. It's funny that you were talking, we were given feedback. The only other thing I can tell you that I heard a lot about, you, you mentioned roads, but the other one, the big one, was Wenches Quick Trip opening. That was like one of the other big ones there, so I thought that was kind of a cute thing.
That's awesome.
And then the last thing I'll just mention, just because I like to keep the public up to date. to date, so as you may or may not be aware, the, we've got obviously Strawberry Fest towards the end of June, and then we have the Fourth of July fireworks at Kingston Park. I am very pleased to state that we do have currently set in stone 20 of the 25,000 that I've been hoping that we'll get to, and the reason I said the one I think we're going to get, I just can't announce it yet until they get their board approval, which is typical, but definitely wanted to recognize Tennis Sanitation, North Point, which is the new development company that's in town here, 3M, and Renewal by Anderson, all have pledged $5,000 towards the Fourth of July fireworks. Our goal is to get to 25, and then obviously the Cottage Grove Lions kind of put, put together some other things that go with the fireworks that night, so I just want to personally thank Tennis, North Point, 3M, and Renewal at this point, and then hopefully by the next council meeting, we'll have it all set, and I'll tell you the, who the, the fifth one is. So with that, and no other comments. So we do have two workshops this evening for the public, which is open to the public. One is the Intermediate Zone Water Treatment Plant Update, which is, Ryan Burfine is going to be taking us, I believe, and then we have our, starting of our budget workshop for next year. It always starts early, seems like it, so we'll have some early discussions about budgets. There is no workshops that are close to the public this evening, so we won't be adjourning in here. Council, we will join our staff, and anybody that's in the audience wants to come, we will be in the training room. So everybody have a great evening.